Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. A city council workshop will be August 7th, 2019, approximately 6:15. The purpose of the workshop is to interview board applicants. So, since we have like... Are you Julie?
I'm Claudia.
Claudia. Well, Claudia, you are up.
All right.
Thank you. And this is where... You can sit there. It's easier and this is pretty easy and painless. And thank you for applying for the boards. We appreciate it very much.
My pleasure.
And if you would, just tell us a little bit about yourself and...
My name is Claudia Hardness. I've been a resident of Satellite Beach for the past 13 years. I came here when my girls were four years old. They went to Holland, Delora, and they're currently in Satellite. Amir is Satellite Beach resident, and his two kids also went to the same schools. We love it here. I love the city community. I love the sustainability programs. I am one of the community gardeners. And when I heard that the beautification board didn't have enough for a forum, I thought, you know, Satellite's given me a lot in the past 13 years. It's time I give something back. So I felt that that would be a good start. I like the idea of keeping Satellite as pretty as it can be. You guys are doing a great job, but there's always room for improvement, right? So by cooperation and working with other boards and all of you, I'd like to continue to enhance the quality of life of the residents.
Thank you. Can I ask you one question off?
Of course.
Where am I?
Oh, born and raised in Grodwick, an island nearby Venice in the northeast.
Don't worry.
You're in a long list.
I mean, you pretty much said everything that I would have asked you. So thank you for coming in and doing this. It's very important that the community stays involved, and I personally appreciate it. I'm sure the community will appreciate it.
Tom?
I'm a liaison to that board, and it's a great board. I'm glad you've been joining.
Do you have any ideas of something that you'd like the board to try or something you see that you'd like to get your hands on?
I really like flowers, and I know we do a lot with local plants and plants who are good for drainage and, you know, Nick does a great... Nick and the board does a great job with that. I think there's a lot of places where we could maybe just add a little bit more flowers, non-vegetative plants. And I'm talking about native flowers here. It doesn't have to be, you know, something that is not native, but I think that alone just kind of spruces things up, and of course it helps with pollinators as well. Also, I live right behind the rec center. I know there's a lot of kids there, maybe a mural over there, something that is related to the city. Just the side of Jackson is completely gray right now. Maybe something like that. But obviously, you know, I'm here to talk with the rest of the board and see what their ideas are and...
I love those ideas. Thank you.
I know what St. St. Derek Morris offered up to do. He's a local artist, and he mentioned doing the mural ideas. That would be something definitely to... Yeah. All right. I will...
The only thing I had is thank you for stepping up to a board where we need some help. So we appreciate that.
My pleasure.
And Claudia, the way it works is it's an agenda item. You're welcome to sit through our council meeting, but toward the end of our agenda item, we appoint the boards.
Okay.
You don't have to stay. They will contact you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone here for an interview for a board applicant? If you would, please come up and just state your name. Thank you.
So my name is Jennifer White.
We're going to your form.
Yes.
We're flipping to your form.
I've been in Satellite Beach for five years. My husband just retired from active air force base, and we just bought a home here three years ago. So we're finally able to put some words down. Let's see. I am the lead rescue for a local wildlife rescue group. I'm still wearing my shirt. I'm all day. We run a wildlife ambulance all over the county, and we're the only ones in the county that do that. When you think of injured, displaced, entanglement, all that, all made of wildlife. And then we send that all over the state to specialized facilities to get help. And I love Satellite Beach. It's amazing. We worked really, really hard to get here. We learned about this little gem from the military. So my husband didn't let us retire anywhere, and this was it. We live here, and we first bought a house in the county. I didn't know you couldn't be on board if you were in the county. We literally sold that house and moved into Satellite Beach so I could become part of the community.
Great. You have Samsonine and Working Board check and Sustainability. Is either one of them your first choice over another?
I like the working group because I like to be involved. And I think that I would go for the work for the next... For the future for that. That sounds really cool. So I'm actually super stoked about some of the things that may be going on here or that we can research, so...
Cool. Any questions?
No. You sound really cool. I want you to part of our city team.
Are they the ones that were just recently having some issues with raising money? Thank you so much.
No problem.
Were they the ones to get everything they needed or... It's always probably...
Yeah, we are totally just following years. And I brought, actually, a supporter for each of you. We're a little bit of an organization for all states. So we're struggling, but we're going as today, so...
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And again, we do the appointment during our meetings. Thank you very much. Is there any other applicants here? Seeing none? Questions from board or anything? So I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
Why did other people think that we're here?
Well, we had two. Kristi West and Rick Summerall are two that could not be here. Okay? So...
But the rest said that they were...
They were coming, so at this time, we adjourn. At this time, I'll reconvene the workshop, August 7th, 2019, approximately 6:30. And Taylor? Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming. If you would, we're coming through here just to make sure we got your paperwork. Do we have Taylor's...
She's number two right there.
Okay, thank you. So Taylor, if you... Oh, here it is.
Right, right. I want to...
Yep. Please.
Well, I'm Taylor. I moved to Florida about four years ago from New York. I just purchased my very first townhouse. That's in January. So I've been kind of getting very familiar with Satellite Beach and this kind of vibe to be more part of the community. So here I am.
Great, thank you. You put that in beautification board.
Yes.
Perfect. Questions?
Have you ever served on a municipal board or anything like that before?
Not for a city. I do... I work for Health First, so I'm part of a board there. I do almost every minute and organizing all the speakers and educational speakers for that. So I'm fairly familiar with being part of a board, but now I'm part of a city board now.
And the beautification board, is there... What about that board? Who's it different you make? Where are you gravitated towards? Or why did you pick that one?
To be honest, I just really like being involved with the community. So I think that's a really good board that will kind of, you know, people driving around here, they see that, like, the land, the trees, the flowers. It makes people more excited to come home. The cleanliness of their city, all that, I think is very important to keep people here and to make more people want to be here. So I just really like that. And I read part of some of the reading minutes that, like, you guys have the garden committee, and you know, you guys are really starting to kind of do the go green with the straw. So I think it's just really important, and I kind of just want to be a part of that.
Thank you. Any further question? The way it works is in our regular meeting, one of the agenda items is appointments for boards, which is usually later on in the meeting. You're more than welcome to stay, but we will call you if you don't. You don't have to stay. Okay?
I want to ask her as well. There's a conflict with the media.
Okay. And did you check the meeting mic?
Yes, it's the first Thursday of the month.
And you're fine? Okay.
It's not in the morning anymore?
No, no.
Yes, it is evening. I couldn't remember which time it was.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other... No other board people? Don't... Don't worry about those guys. Especially the guy in the black shirt there. You're not. Okay. I will adjourn the workshop again.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. A regular meeting of the city council of Satellite Beach, August 7th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Before we join Councilwoman Gibson for a moment of silence and a pledge, we are audio recording this meeting. The camera's not working, so it's just audio. So it's on everybody in the audience to know. Mandy?
Please, all rise for Ms. White. And the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, open up for agenda item three, citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. Non-agenda items, I'll take citizens of the city of Satellite Beach first.
Okay.
Non-agendas.
Non-agendas, and I'm not from the city of Satellite Beach.
Okay, I'll get with you. Here are no comments from citizens, non-citizens. The mics open.
Okay, thank you. Hey, you're awesome. Go first. My name is Gwen Burley. I live at 710 Unity Drive, Indian Harbor Beach. I know I'm out of my jurisdiction. So I am, however, a decades-long beach owner. I live over here, I work over here, I shop and dine most exclusively between Larder Causeway and Pinefield Causeway. I'm here tonight to see if I can start the process of consideration for a retail pet sale plan. I'm asking for someone to agree to meet with me for maybe 20 minutes because I would like to let everyone know why I'm asking for this and to submit the documentation that I have to support it. Last year, I approached the city of Indian Harbor Beach. It took several months of persistent education on my part and a lot of resistance on their part. I went from being a crazy bony lady to unanimously passed ordinance that actually gave me more animals than I requested. I requested dogs, cats, and rabbits. I don't know if you're familiar with their ordinance, but the city council chose to include game head experiments, duffel... Duffel and chips. So just for the record, I don't live in their jurisdiction either. I'm actually in a small Camion place. So it was a big ask for that town. They have a pet store in their town, which is why I asked for it, and I can substantiate the need. So I'm hoping that with the ask for this city, that it's easier because you don't have a pet store. I'm hoping that somebody will give me the time so that I don't waste ink, paper, and your time doing what I did with Indian Harbor, which was months of submitting. So I don't know if anybody will volunteer for a meeting or suggest a protocol to go over.
Will we give you a protocol? Courtney, you want to tell her a protocol or...
I'd be glad to be with you, because that's usually where it starts. But I just want to let you know, I'm pretty sure we... The county just passed an ordinance on that, and because it was a county-wide ordinance, we didn't opt out, so we may be part of that ordinance. So I'm just going to check into that real quick.
Okay.
Because we never opted out. Most ordinances that have a regional impact are done on the county level, and then the cities have an option to opt out of it if we wanted to from a home rules perspective. But in this instance, we did not. So if that ordinance applies to us, then we would have to pass another ordinance specifically getting at it.
So you will set up your meeting with Courtney?
No, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
I'll get a... Maybe you can get her on the card in my office for me?
Yes.
If you have a grab and tour, we could...
At this time, citizens' comments still open for non-agenda items. So non-agenda items. Here are no further citizens' comments. I'll close citizens' comment portion. We'll move on to agenda item four, city council comments. Councilwoman?
I think this might be a couple of weeks overdue, but I do want to thank Public Works and Nick and whoever else cleaned up the whole pond area in front of City Hall. It looks wonderful. It looks really, really nice. And then I also just want to remind everybody that school starts on Monday. The streets will be a little different, lots of extra kids on bikes and families walking and biking to school and maybe school zones and buses, and so just think about teachers and kids and parents that are cheering on Monday.
Mark?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Mandy?
I'm one of those parents that are going to be cheering on Monday. So yeah, thank you for taking care of our kids. So I just want to say that I would like to thank my deepest apologies for the event planned over the weekend in Faux, Ohio, Texas, and for all those over by those events. They're pretty wonderful, and hopefully at some point we'll come to a place where we don't receive things like this anymore. But other than that, probably we'll...
I'm good. I'm also good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item five, city attorney's report.
I have one item. Based on my conversation with John today or yesterday, I don't remember what day it was, but this discarded property is in compliance with the code. So we just need to get the release signed that we agreed to do.
Okay.
Because that's all I'm agreeing on.
Is that what you need me to sign?
I don't remember who's off.
Okay.
But definitely you can sign it, but I can get it over here and get it taken care of.
So it's gone?
Empty lot.
Yeah, they cleared... Actually, that would... From the information and conversation I have with John, that wasn't even the issue. The issue was basically getting the article done.
Okay. But we're all there?
We're done.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim. John, thank you for 12 years or whatever it took us, but I'm glad it's done. Thank you, guys. Any other...
Deserted.
Okay. City manager's report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. I did receive a thank you message from a resident, Shane Martin, from Public Works, who brought his duties to help her save a turtle. And that leads into another... I know we... I did get in discussions with the Florida Wildlife Hospital, noticed that some of our Public Works Department members do bring animals to them every now and then. And so we are going to start training, workers' comp training, on what to bring and what not to bring. And then I just had a great meeting with a Florida Wildlife ambulance group that they take all the animals to, Florida Wildlife Rescue. Wild Florida Rescue. And I think we're going to talk about how we can assist them from a sustainability standpoint, but that reminded me of a good story. And then also with Florida Wildlife Hospital, they were going to do a couple of trainings for our community, so some community workshops. So we're getting ready to schedule that with them. And that basically will help... What's the biggest question we get when people find animal, they'll call us, and they're like, what do I do? And where do I take it? So that will help answer some of those questions. So we're going to be calling Wild Florida Rescue as well to see if they can help our residents understand how to handle this situation.
Thank you.
Our community development department has maintained their ISO classification of a class three for one and two family residential properties and a class two for commercial and industrial properties, and we can see that attachment. And I just wanted to point out that we were, the ISO group, that's the people who run that program, required a checklist for review, and some of those checklists are very extensive and unnecessary for a community our size. And we have always, you know, balked at having to do that. And they were going to lower our classification because of that. And John Stone, our building official, community development director, contacted them and created one that matched our needs and satisfied their needs, so we were able to keep our ISO classifications. I thought that was a good job on his part, and I wanted to recognize him for that. I wanted to update you on the Melbourne Water issue. Their city manager has been in contact with me as well as the other city managers of the cities that they service to let us know what's going on. They have had a town hall meeting that unfortunately, in my opinion, focused more on the utility than it did the water quality problems. When you're looking at an issue at like Washington, they can't control the water quality. That's out of their hands, the utilities' hands. But they can't control how they treat it. And so they have been... They're doing a whole round of extra tests throughout the neighborhoods to make sure that these are... That they're in compliance with state standards. And then also, they are going to be doing another round of sampling, both in Melbourne and the East Side, to make sure that they are adequately meeting state standards. So it's a whole round of new testing that they're going to be doing. But I did want to... I did want to give them support because of their, you know, their water quality issues that are beyond our control. And I think that that's something Satellite Beach and the other cities that they service can assist them in starting lobbying statewide policy to address some of those issues. So that is where we're at with that, and, you know, we'll be talking about how we're going to handle some of those as we move on into legislative session. I wanted to make... The city attorney updated you on the avenue, and then I wanted to update you on the playground at Satellite Beach. And I know that this church has been completed. They have asked us for approval of the wording or sign, so that'll be put in. And I've asked them if they're going to have a ribbon cutting, so I'll let you know if that occurs, but I wanted to let you know that that's been done. And then I also wanted to let you know, coming up soon, we're plodding an idea among the staff about addressing some of the issues that we're encountering in our employees. And, you know, some of the Public Works Department, you know, when we think of things like, oh, we'll just start earlier, but we have ordinances that prevent us from going on until 4:00 7:00. So we may come to you with an idea for a committee to talk about those items. And then also the other issue, PTSD with our public safety departments. I give a lot of feedback about some of the programs that we offer and the lack thereof. And so I'd like to just... Those are two workers' comp issues that I see affecting the city in the future, and I'd like to be proactive about addressing that. So we'll be bringing those ideas to you soon. As an action item, I have the fire department wants to apply for a non-matched Florida fire assistance grant for six additional air packs and two rapid intervention teams. This equipment will be used for rapid rescue of firefighter in a truck or a last situation, and the request is going to be approximately $78,000. And not here if you have any questions about that, but we're... That's their equipment that we're going to apply. It's a non-matched grant, so...
Questions from council concerning the action item? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve applying for the fire fighter assistance grant for $78,000 with no match in...
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Rozicki. At this time, because it's an action item, open up for public comment on this action There are no public comment. Back to council. Any further discussion? Hear none?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes. Motion passes. Courtney, thank you. Is that everything? Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item seven, discuss, take action, adopting resolution number 1015. Jim?
Resolution number 1015, a resolution of the city of Satellite Beach Board relating to 100% renewable energy by 2050, providing certain findings, providing severability, repeal or conflicting resolutions, and an effective date.
Thank you. Here.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor and council members. Today in front of you, you have adoption of resolution 1015 relating to achieving 100% of renewable energy by 2050. We have some people here in the audience that are willing to speak. I want to give out a couple of quick statements first, and then we'll have them come up. As the impacts from energy consumption continue to alter the environment at an increasing rate over time, methods of energy consumption should be adjusted to reflect the wisdom of the times and to utilize the most up-to-date technologies. This falls in line with our green sheeting target number one, to convert all our maintenance buildings to solar power in the next two decades and to strive to make it all in Public Works building run completely off solar power by 2022. Happy to answer any questions about this. I'd like to invite the folks from Sierra Club up to speak. That's all right?
Please. All right.
Hello, good evening.
Your name is Tanya?
Tanya.
So my name is Leslie Maloney. I live in Melbourne Beach, and I'm vice chair of our local Sierra Club. We're very excited that you all have taken this up this evening, and so much appreciation for what Satellite Beach is already doing in terms of sustainability. And this just makes sense. It's another feather in your cap to set this goal and move toward that with everything else that you're doing. So we... You are a leader. There's a lot of momentum behind this resolution. We have 132 cities across the country already. You will be the tenth in Florida if you pass this tonight. And this will just give Satellite Beach and all the great things that are going on here in terms of sustainability especially, it'll give you more notoriety to join this group, to join this fraternity of cities, and you will help spur the momentum on for other cities to join you. There are other cities in Riverdale County that we're working with right now. Of course, you're the first, but you will encourage that. I see you do it just like the other sustainability efforts. And so you'll be helping that momentum move. So we thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to say that the Sustainability Board did have the presentation from Sierra Club and for this that comes to you as well. And that also, you know, as we promote sustainable technologies, we change the future and create new jobs in these sectors and areas of maintenance of these technologies and to promote them will become cheaper, more available for our residents and the community as a whole. And that, I'd like to ask, any questions?
Questions from council? It's great, Nick. Great job.
I thought we would be the first on the coast also.
Great. I met... We met a couple of days ago, and I think it's great. I think it's something we always strive for, and I can take the initiative on doing things. We did it with baffle boxes, the beach. We've done it with a lot of things, so it's just another one. Thank you for your work. Any questions before I open up for public? At this time, open up for public comment for agenda item seven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and fellow city council people. I'm Phil Stacey of North Barrett Island, speaking on behalf of the Space Coast EV Drivers. You know, we've been here before, and we just want to say thank you. We support this commitment that you're making in that Satellite Beach is a leader in the state of Florida. You are not only a leader in our state, you're a leader in the nation, and you're something that other communities can look up to. We're very proud of you for doing this. We're very proud of you for doing this. We appreciate your support for not only driver charging, but for solar and the other improvements that you've made, efficiency, et cetera. Sustainability is not just good for the city or for the planet, it's good for business. And by doing this, you are inspiring people to spend more money here, you will make a climate for improved business, for improved profitability, and I think businesses recognize that, they respect communities, that respect the environment. So the Space Coast EV Drivers wants to say thank you. We thank you for supporting us every, every year for our National Drive Electric Week, but really for doing this, making this long-term commitment to sustainability. You are a leader, you're an example for every other community in this county to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions?
Electric cars.
Thank you.
Are they giving them away for?
I need an SUV electric car. We need, we need police electric cars.
Podium still open? If I hear no further, I'll close it and bring it back to council. At this time, I'll bring it back to council.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 1015.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion from council?
I just want to say, you know, Satellite Beach has always been a very forward-moving community and, you know, it's been way before our time up here. It started years ago with people that had a vision for how this city was going to evolve and it's been really a pleasure to be up here, especially with, you know, Frank and Mark and having looked at some of these issues over the years that we've been on council. It's just really gratifying to see where we are today and the things that we're doing and, and you're right, the respect that we give from around the community and from around the state because I, I tell people what we do here and they're just like, they just don't get it. But, thank you.
Thank you.
One comment. I, I met with Leslie a few months ago and she approached me about this and it was easy for me to say yes, we definitely do this because this definitely follows with the whole city. The great thing about it is every time we adopt a resolution like this or we set another example, those types of people that live those lifestyles are going to flock into our community and it just makes it easier and easier and easier to be able to make these decisions. So we're, hopefully we keep it up and keep bringing us cool ideas and we've got a city manager that just loves to try things out and see if it works and move on to the next thing. So we appreciate you guys all being here and thank you for the Sierra Club for even starting it.
Thank you. Further?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff, thank you for working on it, Mindy, thank you. I think we want to take a little break, do they want a picture now or are they going to hang out? Or do they want to hang, wait till the end of the meeting? I mean, it's up to them what they would like to do. I'd hate to make them sit here. Let's do the picture.
We're going down here?
Yeah, everybody, please. Council permission, I'd like to move agenda item nine next. Okay, at this time, we are going to move agenda item nine for eight and agenda item nine, discuss, take action on approval of guaranteed energy, water, and wastewater performance saving contract.
You moved me up, I'm happy. Sure, I've been waiting for the last year to have this conversation. So before you tonight, you have a copy of the ABM contract that you started back in July of 2018. You had great one-on-one meetings to work out the 96-page contract and I have to tell you, you're turning the day up to hours. So we went through the timeline again, you know, we've met numerous times before you, sorry, I'm sorry, please. We started back in March of 19th with the letter of intent with ABM to do the energy savings audit. From there, we had the comprehensive workshop where council directed staff to bring back the contract, including the facility audits, findings, and to prioritize those for your, for your review, for your, you know, cause work you wanted. A lot of those were replacement and improvement of LED lighting, solar lighting around DeSoto Park. We're talking about roof replacements, telephone replacement, roof HVAC replacements. So from there, we, it's a new agenda item, we, we were sent back to do the financing and we came back with the financing report that you approved a couple, three weeks ago. So in summary, the contract is going to provide a few things that we appreciate, which is a system-wide approach to a lot of these facility maintenance issues that, you know, we face in all cities and counties, you know, because it's not easy to come up with a lot of money for these kind of projects. The consistency of the performance from, from ABM, they have their own vendors, they will be able to get the projects done within six months versus bidding them all out, they're, you know, they're, you're going to have faster implementation, no change orders. The, the energy savings guarantee that's in Schedule C that the contract shows over $16,000 in the first year and then of course, over time, we'll demonstrate the savings are met and we'll cut and check for the difference if, if they don't meet that, that goal. So providing the upgrades with a construction management company like ABM provides a certainty of your outcome because that's all in the contract, guaranteed maximum price. If they get on that roof and they find it's going to cost more than what they thought, it's on them. So the benefit of the cost of money today at 2.5% interest rates versus doing it over time, you don't know what the interest rates are going to be, you don't know what construction costs are going to be. It eliminates risks to your existing user groups. You know, you have leaky roofs or HVACs that aren't working, you know, that puts those folks out and so it's, it's good not to do that. And then everything's to be completed. They say by December, you know, God willing, no hurricanes, nothing comes up, you know, and we will have, Alan will be the project administrator, so if any project that is done, he will review, he will sign off so that we know that's been completed and any warranty that comes with any of the air conditioners will be in, in our possession. And so with that, the request is to approve the guaranteed energy, water, and wastewater performance savings contract and the maintenance agreement with ABM Building Services LLC.
Liz, thank you very much, thank you for coming up with me because now I know I met with you and as my book really marked.
I was about to answer one of your questions.
I know. But Liz and I met and she answered every one of my questions very well and one of the big ones that I had was if we replace something, do we replace it with something of equal or better value? So not saying, you know, there's an end in contract, but let's say when, if it does, I will least want that those units that are there, I don't want them to be less of a value than what was there because the whole idea behind this is to not kick, your comment the other day was great, kicking the can down the road, we got to get to where we need to fix stuff. So I met with Liz and my book was marked and we discussed it, so thank you, I appreciate it, I feel comfortable with it now. Any further comments from council before I open up for public?
I just wanted to say I felt pretty comfortable, so I agree with her, not as diligently as I promised I would, but I agree with her, pretty, pretty in-depth and through all the meetings that we've had, you've always been very good about answering questions. So if anybody has any concerns, maybe we could post the dates of the meetings where you guys came and spoke to get a better idea of exactly what it is that they're trying to do so we don't re-tell the whole story all over again, but the concept is pretty cool and, you know, you guys better do a good job or that guy over there, you know, who cares? Maybe I won't.
Can I just clarify, but the other question?
Maybe, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, over the past six years, we've worked on, you know, getting the vehicles under control, we've worked on getting the roads under control, you know, that took a couple of years. You know, last year was the year of stormwater, it took a year to get the staff salaries back under, you know, back up to par, if I could say, and then, you know, dealing with the compression problems that happened during the recession. So that took up a couple of years. So this is really the year of facilities and it's really because we can't keep up with the breaking down and it doesn't say anything about, about our staff because our staff can only do what's given to them with the money that's given to them and they just did not get the resources that they needed to fix a lot of these facilities. And it's not even just the lack of maintenance, it's just age, some of it's just, it's just age. So at this point, you know, we really need to get it under control and like, you know, Liz has said, with the interest rate, we've got a great interest rate on that $1.4 million loan and that $1.4 million loan, which is highly publicized on Facebook, unfortunately incorrectly, is actually what is being, what is paying for this contract and this contract only deals with roofs, ACs, solar lighting at DeSoto Park, a phone system for the city facilities, so literally city facilities only, has nothing to do with infrastructure or anything like that, it's only city facilities. So we're not doing this to promote development interests or anything like that, we're simply doing, you know, city facilities. So I just wanted to make that clear. And, and that $1.4 million loan was an interest rate of 2.65, which is a great interest rate. And that interest rate is actually lower than the construction inflation rate right now. So if we just saved our money, we would be wasting money if we would, if we saved our money and did these projects down the road because then you're also, it's getting worse and worse and worse as time goes on. So I just wanted to make that clear and that's not more, less for you and more for the people in the audience, so I just want to make that clear.
And then can I just introduce ABM, who have worked with me on Saturdays, phone call in the, you know, middle of the days, in the evenings, Rob Duncan, he's the municipal account executive, and then Chuck Hope, who's the Florida Regional Director. And if there's any indication of what these projects are going to look like based on the diligence that they did putting under this contract, I'm pretty confident that there is going to, is going to be a good job.
Great, thank you. Questions before I open up?
I just had just a couple, sorry.
Go ahead, Nick.
A couple of questions related to the maintenance contract, maybe just so everybody can hear. That is built into the budget that we saw at our last meeting? I know that the loan was built in, but the maintenance agreement is built in as well?
Yeah.
And is there, like, an ongoing maintenance, like, we know that they're going to be here once a month or they stop by every week, like, is that built in?
So yeah, Julie, that's a good question. If you look on page 108 of the contract agreement, so the maintenance is for the HVACs, it's not for the roof or the color panel systems, it's simply for the HVACs. And basically, depending on, if it's a brand-new air conditioner, they're going to have warranties, they're going to have a specific type of maintenance that they're going to have to have. So it'll be directed and scheduled on a regular basis with a scheduling system based on manufacturer's recommendations, equipment, location, application, type, runtime, and the company's experience with doing these. And honestly, the, the agreement replaces any air conditioners that aren't replaced in this contract. So it's to their best interest to get out there and maintain these to the best of their ability because it's going to cost them every time one goes down, we have to replace it. So I have complete confidence that that's.
And is the work going to be able to be done and, like, things still happening, like, the Schecter Center will still be running while?
Yeah, and that's my, actually, they have to coordinate with our, with our rec center and with City Hall, normal business working hours and so, you know, we'll make sure that we accommodate.
I didn't know something would have to be shut down.
Especially with the roof on the Schecter Center, that's going to be coordinated with Cassie and we'll have to move some of the kids over to Scotty Hall or, you know, whatever that person's at.
And that's part of the contract too, is they, we have to give them access, so sometimes they have that challenge where, you know, the local government will make it challenging for them to get in, so that's part of that agreement.
Yeah, and just if you look in the contract on schedule F, that little teen, tiny, that's what this is, and this is the construction schedule and it'll show you where they're going to be at what time and if they keep on the schedule, our staff's going to have a better understanding of what they're looking at for. And so we can obviously do that in advance.
That's more.
Liz, I just wanted to say thank you for meeting with me, going through it, I appreciate it, excellent stuff.
Jim, good with the contract? Got to ask a question.
Well, I mean, there's give and take, but for the most part, yeah.
At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item. Laura Stoe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager Barker and city clerk Pierce, member IMC, I believe.
Yes.
Raymond Garubio, G-A-R-U-B-O, I live at 640 High Business Drive, here in Satellite Beach.
I used to live at 620. I remember.
Did you, did you kind of like what part, what's my part? Oh, that is, I'm here for a couple reasons. First of all, I just heard their presentation at the City of Cocoa Beach. I never met a gentleman before until last week, but this is a forward-looking city and I'm invested in your forward-lookingness because I have business here that you authorized, Political Harmony Consulting Services. I usually get your laugh, but I'm a relationship person, my system's thanks to you for calling me. What you're doing for this city helps me in my business. I'm in the image management business for cities and school boards. Working with ABM, as forward-thinking as you are, with the precise figures that I've heard now twice from these gentlemen, and I just met them, does a lot for me personally, does a lot for the city, does a lot for the children who come here, so I just want to endorse for the citizen and the business owner in this town, that ABM, and I've checked them out, are a solid company. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Mike Silo, no further public comment? Or you back to council on this agenda item?
I had an opportunity to sit down with Liz and Liz, thank you for going through all of this. You know, some of the stuff that was brought up is really relevant because when you look at trying to get stuff done today as a contractor, I know, just in my industry, trying to find people, not only the people, I mean, the people that work under the people, that are competent to do a lot of the stuff that, you know, we're eventually going to need to have addressed here in our city and to, to be able to, ABM and know that they have contractors in place to handle all this stuff, not only from the installation, but also, you know, the maintenance aspect of it, I mean, it was assuring me that I think we're getting a good product. You know, and I mentioned it earlier, that we were always a forward-thinking city, you know, if you guys are looking at some of the stuff that we're trying to accomplish here, if there's better ways of installing it, I would look for your input on that because if we're putting an air conditioning on a roof that's eventually going to puddle and we can set it off on the side of the building where it's hanging off the building, where it's not in a puddle and it's ventilated better, you know, this is kind of what I'm looking for is your ability to say to Alan, we can do this better and I think I would be very comfortable if, you know, things like that come up because, you know, I look at the Schecter Center and it is a big building, but, you know, we're talking about building a new public works building, a new fire department building, there's ways we can incorporate the new AC units on those buildings so they're not on roof and they're not going to be sitting in a puddle. You know, I think that works to our advantage, not only in the longevity of the units, but also in, you know, the way they're going to operate for us. So I, I think this is, once again, you know, we're moving in a direction that I'm thrilled that Courtney and Liz, you know, came to us with your proposal. Thank you. Courtney, also, I see it more arid and so forth and how much Alan's staff is taxed, you know, and every time we build something or we add a new field or something, it's, you got to add that into the number of man-hours it takes to keep that up. So I know I'm going to add another one to you here in the next couple of weeks, sorry, I got a little field freedom though. So I see, I think even that is going to help from our public works department for man-hours there, so we'll be saving, we'll say we don't have to use those man-hours there anymore.
I can honestly say we have added, since I've been here, three more facilities to the city's maintenance schedule and we still have less public works employees than they've had in 2006.
Yep. So hopefully this relieves everybody a little. Thank you very much. Any questions, other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve guaranteed energy, water, and wastewater performance saving contract, guaranteed professional maintenance agreement with ABM Building Services LLC.
Thank you. A motion by Councilman Montanaro?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Any further discussion? What?
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you very much for your help with our staff. Okay, we'll move back to agenda item eight, discuss, take action on staff, PowerPoint presentation on sustainability action plan.
So we're going to go pretty fast, but, you know, it's been a while since we've been able to come and present to you about the, you know, an update of the board's sustainability board's activities and our environmental coordinator's, you know, work. So he's talked through this presentation with the board, and so he's here on behalf of the board and the staff.
Thanks.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, council. For my second event, shall we talk about sustainability action plan and green achievement targets review and update? Like Courtney said, we'll try to make it quick. Since the adoption and inception of the plan, May of 2017, we have completed seven out of the 20 green achievement targets. Thirteen of the remaining targets are in one shape or form in development, many phases to make these things happen. Those conversations happened with the Sustainability Board, city manager, staff, and other directors of different departments to make them happen. The first set of these 20 goals are to be completed by the end of '22. This is a quick review of how this all works. In the first five years, the next five years, we'll create another 20 set of GATS, and so on and so forth, until we complete the 88 GATS that were set out to achieve as part of the plan. Once approved, the new set of GATS will be budgeted and brought to you for final approval. Now, I'm going to propose some at the end of the presentation. They're just proposed, so once we get there, I'll feel that they're final or anything like that. So I'm going to take a end-up look and try to look quick. So, these are the completed GATS as they stand. GAT number two, green achievement target number two, establish a financially sustainable community garden. Thank you all for those who've been visited. We have a few gardeners out in the audience. It's been a lot of fun. We rented 36 beds in the past two years since the implementation of the garden. Some people have had to drop out, so we, you know, we're continuing to be cash positive on this. We actually received $4,000 in donations from botanical interests. Very generous donation over the last two years. We've given those seats away to all of our gardeners and the community members at Earth Day events and Founder's Days. And we've grown some actually from seed and given them away to people at Earth Day events. It's been really fantastic. This is actually going to help us transition into green achievement target number 11, having to do with composting. So everything kind of ties together. Lovely photo of a few of us there at the grand opening, just wanted to share that because there's a nice photo of the younger gentleman. He's the one that kind of spearheaded the creation of the garden, so I'd like to give him some credit as well. A few photos from the garden, there's from the event that day. Thank you to all of the attendants. A few of the garden beds and some different things growing, from beans to beets to peas, tomatoes to green beans, spinach, kale, squash, and the like, some rosemary and some few other plants. All of our gardeners have the same eight-foot-long, four-foot-wide, two-foot-deep bed with mushroom compost, and we are starting to do our own composting from the kitchen here, which is going to tie into a green team initiative that we'll talk about in a little bit. And it's just beautiful beds all around. So we'll move on to the next one, which is electric vehicle charging stations. You heard from Phil Stasek earlier, who's a big EV enthusiast, as well as myself. After we did get our electric vehicle, I bought an electric vehicle, and the $525 revenue we've gotten with the charging stations, I'd like to say that part of that definitely comes from me. Every day I drive to work, I charge my car. It's absolutely fantastic. We do charge 15 cents a kilowatt hour, so, you know, that's what we charge for the residents like myself and Phil and anybody that visits from the town. However, the city vehicle, which is the Chevy Volt, there we go, the Chevy Volt, the back one, there's the city one, the front one's mine. That one has actually saved us some money as well. This is the charging station out front, and we also have one in Pelican. This one's a dual charging station. And depending on how much money we make, we will eventually become economically sustainable as well. Very easy to use. Swipe your card, faster than pumping gas. So number seven, one of the workshops that we had was on EV cars. We've done invasive plants. We're going to do community gardening. That's the next one over here on August 29th. I've been doing these once a month, so folks that attended, thank you for everyone who's attended. The best one we had was 25 people that attended our recycling one. It's tied with native plants as the best-attended workshop, once a month, typically the third Thursday, depending on meeting times, at 7:00 PM, right here in council chambers. We advertise it on our Facebook page, go to GreenSB.org. We get a pretty good turnout. We're trying to boost those numbers every chance we get. These flyers were given out in a stormwater education package to do with a different grant originally. This is the second set of these, so they were part of that, but we give them away at events. We give them away up here at City Hall. We give them away to, anyway, the intensive workshops, it's sustainable events, that's where people that show up to one workshop usually show up to another one. At those events, we do more than just promote workshops. We promote all the different green things we do, sustainability-related. One of the things we've been promoting is the new resolutions and ordinances that have to do with single-use plastic reductions in the city. One of them, ordinance number 1129, as you so graciously passed again, thank you for all your support, is to reduce the impact from vendors at events, so no vendor can sell anything styrofoam or single-use plastic, and we give them the opportunity to sign a contract at rec, which helps them remember to do this. At events, I walk around the top of them to make sure that they adhere to this green achievement target. You know, no plastic bags, balloons, pencils, cups. And we actually gave away a number of single-use, I mean, not single-use, single-use replaced metal straws and cutlery at Earth Day. It was really great there. Resolution 102 had to do with plastic straws. And 1014 you passed last time, which is going to end up in the green team, which will help do a lot of this internally. So number 13 is provisional dark skies. Well, unfortunately, dark skies wasn't what we wanted it to be. We don't call them the streetlights on A1A, so that limits our ability to achieve this dark sky certification. So with direction from staff and the board and Sustainability Board, we created what we deem to be starry skies. There was a few different names that popped around, but the starry skies was the one we settled on. Dim skies was another alternative, but we were brighter than that as far as intelligently. So our starry skies are what we decided on. Basically, we're going to lead by example, as we always do here in Satellite Beach, to reduce our illumination at night. We want to put everything on timers, reduce any spill from any of our properties, put some shields on some things. There will be some costs involved, but it'll be worth it. Here's a little shout-out to Dominic. I think you were in the same shirt, actually. Didn't mean for that, sorry about that. But this is a lot of, not all the things we do, we do ourselves. A lot of things has to do with partners, and I wouldn't be able to do anything without partners. It makes the world go round. So big thank you to council as a partner, yourself.
You know, Pete is taller than me.
And he's a lot taller than, he's a lot taller than. This was originally in the photo.
He's one of the bigger ones.
It's very old picture.
He's like six foot now, let me think.
And he's still doing the cleanups. So we're supporting the cleanups, we're doing more cleanups, we're working with KPD, they've just got a new staff to help drive this.
I think that is a different shirt, I'm just saying.
What's the same one? It's the same one.
So it's ongoing, but it is completed. So some things will continue even though they're complete, like the garden, like the EV and like the beach windows. We did have a scout that put up a box recently that kind of helps with this, to reduce plastic trash on the beach. It's been very successful, and he's been going out and tidying those up. We get a lot of scout projects, and that's just one I want to mention. Another project that we did to assist with that previous green achievement target was to install these signs throughout our parks to help people identify what can be properly recycled. Attached to the side of this sign will be some cigarette recycling containers that you all proved previously, that we did get in and have put a few up. And thanks to Public Works, Seth, they run us. Who, again, a shout-out to Public Works, and all the great things they do to make all these things happen, which without them, we would not be nearly close to seven green achievement targets completed. The cigarette butt containers, I just spoke to a scout today, they're going to be looking at maybe helping to empty some of those and reduce the amount of maintenance on staff. So those are coming soon. One of the other things that are completed yet ongoing is the project on DeSoto. So stormwater enhancement through vegetation and bioswell retention was something that I was passionate about, I wrote a grant about, which we did get some funding for. We planted the plants along this area. We had over 150 residents involved. We're creating educational materials through the DEP portion of that grant, which is finished out, we've been paid for. We have received some funds back from the NEP portion of that grant, but since we are still planting more plants, we haven't finished that grant yet. It looks like, sorry, it takes some time below. This is a very good quality photo of the slides, I think it's a lot of... We have Public Works, of course, working alongside volunteers, and Zach Eichels, our intern, as well as a good friend of mine and old boss. So friends, family, and everyone around came out to be part of that. So it was really a lot of fun. Earth Day of 2018, that was then, when it was finished. Very nice with all the pine straw mulch. This is today. Built-in, maintaining nutrients, growing tall, really just doing a great job to soak up all that stormwater. So we have sea oxide daisy, blanket flowers, sportinas grasses, kumthies and the like, all edged with sunshine alboza. Little sunshine alboza there, as well as the tall grasses, all the sportinas, blanket flower, and some dune sunflower up front. And that's what we've completed so far. So those were seven quick views at some of the completed green achievement targets. These are the ones underway. Green achievement target number one, Solar on City Hall, isn't completed because it says "all municipal buildings," so technically not completed. However, we are sitting under solar right now. 232 panels between the two buildings, generating as of today 97,000 kilowatt hours of power since its installation on October of last year, on October 8th of 2018. We have abated 76 tons of CO2 emissions, which has yielded to 1,153 trees, and even though it's not up there, I think I remember, it's 75,000 pounds of coal. So a lot of energy produced in a way that is much more environmentally friendly, as well sending us money. We have, as I went and put this slide together, or written on this, I think it's probably over 3,500 now, but at the time, we'd saved over $3,500 by going solar. And we did have a few months, then we produced more power than we needed for the facility. That doesn't always happen, it depends on weather and temperature and things of that nature. We'll be looking to do this more in the future, so prepare to hear more things from me about more solar. One of the things that we got as a bonus to doing solar was that I had a conversation with FPL, which is why we have the solar canopy at Pelican, which produces 25 kW, which goes back to the grid, and powered our solar for the concert. And I know Dominic loves to talk about the first solar-powered concert in the county. However, the power did go back to the grid, we pulled from the grid, just to clarify that, but the energy that they used to play the music was definitely less than what we were generating that day. This is what it looks like. It's absolutely gorgeous. And this is what the one in Pelican looks like, very pretty as well. So one of the future beautiful things that we're going to see in our city is related to green achievement target number three, to achieve the equivalent certification for one municipal building, and since we are constructing a building from the ground up, very easy way to achieve that. That is the location by Delora Jackson, where the dentist is, the old post office, and where we will be. Out front, as, thank you so much, Joseph, for your counsel, for your comment on the pond. And yes, Public Works works very hard. That is a lot of work. I miss the manatees. I know Alan, sometimes they're such a...
I don't miss them.
But they used to eat all the vegetation, so there's no natural mechanism to do that. So we have to do that the hard way, and it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. Which is why I jump in there with them, because it's a lot of work, and I hate to see someone do that by themselves. We got a pretty good system down. It's going to probably be biannually to do that type of maintenance at least, depending on vegetation growth, but as the men are further taller and the sportinas grasses take over, it should hopefully counteract some of that. So that's our first look at zero escaping in the city. We're going to look at more zero escaping up front, maybe even the little areas in front of the police department that are now these small grass areas that are easy transitional zones, we can start hitting some of those next. Like I said, the electric car, fantastic, we have. Indeed, so far in 2019, saved 137, and in 2018, we saved $355 by using our own power to power our car, which we recently drove to the ACCO. Two of us did carpool in that car, and a few of us carpool in other cars. It was a great event, the Climate Change Officials Workshop in Orlando, where we talked about things like this. It was fun to pull up an electric vehicle to a climate change workshop, that was really fun. Number eight, so we want to prioritize our vulnerabilities and stressors, and this has been something Courtney's been working on since before I was here, something that you've been working on for years. You will talk about this at the next workshop on the 21st at 5 o'clock. I won't talk too much about that. However, again, you know, related to this, as I mentioned, August 1st and 2nd, we did attend the Association of Climate Change Officials, so the more we know, the better we can prioritize our vulnerabilities. So education is key when it comes to that, and passing these ordinances, 1159 and 1160, we're really helpful with that, and some things that, you know, community development has worked on and on, that the setbacks were one of those things that you had talked about previously. But again, that's on, actually, that's the 21st, is that correct? I think that it needs to be changed, the 21st. Number nine, allow for better access to public transportation. So this has a lot to do with complete streets. So we're looking at the FDOT bus shelters on A1A to be related to some of this, as well as, we'll hear from Liz later, about Jackson Avenue and the sidewalks there, and that's all complete streets related, looking to have more of those, much like Casillas are pretty much a complete street, you know, it's on its way there. Green achievement ten, really dear to me. I love mangroves, as everybody knows, so converting square footage of shoreline into mangroves is something that, you know, I took to heart. This is a picture of the process of converting a shoreline. We do have some people interested in this for this year, or aiming to get three of them onboard to be completed this year. Jacqueline from rec is actually offered to be one of our firsts, so that could be really fun to have someone within the city, to live within the city, work within the city, and be the first to be brave enough to do this, so that they can kind of lead the way. $500 is what we're offering on a one-to-one grant for residents. It's for everybody out there and everybody at home. A one-to-one grant, if you would like to put a living shoreline on your property where you live along the lagoon, to put in riprap, mangroves, native plants, or a swale to reduce the amount of nutrients that enter the lagoon from your property. It's a really easy way to kind of reduce some of your costs. Like I said, GAT 11 was related to our community garden, so here at the community garden, you see me turning compost. A lot of that came from our kitchen. It's a combination of coffee grounds, eggshells, banana peels, and the like. Small spiel at first, but we will have a portion of our workshop this month on the community garden that talks about composting as well. And then we'll have a composting workshop where we're going to make available composters, much like Orlando has in their green works. They actually did donate 10 of them to us to jumpstart our program. The money we make from the composters will go back and divide more composters to make that program sustainable. It's very important to keep your compost green, brown, and wet. So those are things we'll talk about at the workshop. You just talked about AVM. So to reduce energy, right, that's one of our green achievement target number 14. And those, that lighting reduction by going to LEDs, reduces heat, reduces power consumption. So some of that contract will deal with some of our green achievement targets as well, to potentially convert all of it. We're going to have to work closely, handle Public Works, to go in and make some of these changes, but easy win, reduces power, reduces energy consumption, saves money, and is good for the environment. So anything that's not completed by AVM, we'll look to do ourselves. Almost done, we're getting there. Fifteen, partnered with the city commercial entities. Unfortunately, no one has jumped onboard. We did approach a number of different businesses about this. We're getting there with organic hair salon, they need a little more time, it's expensive. And we're looking to that commercial pace program like Orlando has to help them with that.
You just added it. One firm that I sit on the board for has just added the commercial pace aspect of it. So they just did it a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, it's, yeah. Thank you, Courtney, good goodness. So but at this time, there's no business that's completed this, but as you just heard, we're moving in that direction. Number 12, the internal sustainability review. So as the green team is being developed, we had our first kind of groundbreaking with that this morning, and we're going to be talking more and more with department heads to get this going, so that they will select an individual to serve on the green team internally to reduce our plastic and styrofoam use to zero, so that we are environmentally friendly within the city, as well as promoting it at our events for vendors. as well as promoting it at our events for vendors. We'll do it ourselves for all the things that we've purchased as far as the city goes. And we'll also be talking about, eventually, as that continues on and grows, I imagine, to all the buildings and streamline our construction and management operations within the buildings, make them efficient and, and green as well. Again, we do have three more years to complete some of these, so there is time. Uh, last one, please. Oh, there's one more after this, actually. Uh, number eighteen is a grant that recently, I had eleven project partners onboard, and they are providing seventy thousand dollars, which allowed us to, uh, go to the NDP, where we received thirty-two thousand dollars, half, sorry, thirty-four thousand dollars, more than half of the sixty-four that we need. We just need a little bit more funds to do this project. This is a habitat mosaic, and this will help us complete gap eighteen to identify locations. So technically, we did identify the location. You wanted to play that game. But, you know, uncompletion is, so oyster bed development alongside clams and seagrasses. Combine the three into a habitat mosaic to seek greater success. Things work better when they have partners. Uh, testing and tracking synthetic fertilizer, gap nineteen. This, uh, was one of the projects that I put our intern Hannah Best on. She did a lot of work reviewing what's been out there and different ways to go about doing this. From this, we do have a recommendation to adjust the scope a little bit, so that we get a better, uh, fit for the intention of the related metrics to this. Because if we just went out there and measured some very simple measurements without doing a very depth measurement, we wouldn't get great data. We want to get great data. We want to make sure that we present to you and to the community a very clear picture of what's going on, so that might require additional partners to make that happen. So it looks like I'll be writing another grant in the future. Those are the completed and gaps underway. There are a few things I'd like to go over real quick. I know I'm probably over on time. But, um, we did talk to Three-Two Millennials, and they have heard that we will be doing something similar to the gummy fish at Pelican. Uh, well, maybe be that big-ish, we'll see. They have three thousand dollars to work with. The additional costs will be staff time and related assistance through donations. A certain, uh, surfboard shaper may be donating some funk, uh, to assist with building the shell of what will be a turtle. Similar metal construction for the turtle with some, uh, you know, open-mouth mechanism to take in the plastic bottles. She'll be named Millie after the Three-Two Millennials, who will be sponsoring the project. And Millie will be there to say, "Feed Millie," instead of the millions of sea turtles in the ocean. And then KBB will come by and empty it. So again, reducing our maintenance, increasing our sustainability, uh, in our city. Man.
Sure, they will.
Yeah.
They'll last about, I think, six, seven months, and then we'll take over.
Well, I mean, it's more scouts involved. Um, so the green team, as I spoke of again, is another thing kind of underway. I just want to really kind of dive home that we're really developing. And besides looking for the green team, there's so many things that we can do as a city when our staff come together and are on the same page as to how we want to go about doing things, whether that's going for treeless paper, or using pens that are refillable, whatever it may be. Just making sure that we don't all order the same thing at the same time that we don't need. But we can share items, things that we really like, like that. Clean energy, recycling, composting, and plastic use throughout the city. Uh, I wanted to give a big shout-out to our Sustainability Board Chair, who has been doing the Sustainability Board Bike Ride, which we're all invited to go on next Friday. They did a really big success, provided a sustainable certification. Uh, over fifty participants so far. Six PM every third Friday at the DRS RAC Center. So here are some future projects. I don't have to go all over. All of them, if you don't want me to. But there is a lot of them. I just thought, why not make all twenty? Actually, Dr. Lizen got twenty-one. Uh, green achievement targets for the future. I'd be happy to go over these with you. So then we're kind of already doing the cigarette butt collection and things like that. We may end up doing green achievement targets and creating them before we finish out our first set twenty. And that just might be the way that things go, because it's like, we've been talking about A Living Document and the Sustainability Action Plan. So this is a quick snapshot of that plan as it's alive and kicking. Uh, I want to thank you for all your support and your continued support. And if there's any questions on the myriad of topics that I just covered, feel free to ask me now or later, because I understand there's a lot to throw at you. Uh, any questions?
I, I, first of all, I'd like, if you could email all of us a copy of those next.
It's too big. I can, I can give you a.
You just want the last two.
No, just, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Um, the other thing is, um, I got an email today, I think we all got it, from Debbie Austin in Satellite High School, um, requesting any work that students can do for volunteer opportunities. So I just forwarded you that email, so you can call Debbie and talk to her maybe about some of the things that you're looking at on something in Beach Park. Um, the other thing, and you know me to be a native plant person, and, and I was there on Earth Day. Um, when we're looking at mangroves, um, there's three different kinds that you're aware of. We want to make sure if we're planting mangroves, we don't want to be planting the ones that take over. Because there's one variety that is more invasive than others. That's the variety that's behind the fire department over there, and it's filling in that canal. So if we're gonna be promoting mangroves, let's make sure we're not doing something that's ultimately long-term down the road. It's gonna be a problem for us.
Okay. May I add one, with all respect, to, to councilman? Um, I agree with the, proper maintenance is key. The reason that the mangroves are untriable to the point that you would think they'd be more maintenanceable is because they got so tall. We were allowed to keep them at six feet. Since we didn't keep them at six feet, they're now past the general exemption, and they require a certain permit to trim them back to that, to that level. We can do a one-time permit to trim at a window them if we wanted to, but the size of them is, is like you said, it gets to a point where if you haven't maintained them for years, then you can't get back to that level.
You're looking at putting these on people's backyards on the canals. They're, they may not be trimming there, so we don't want to put them in a situation where, you know, we're putting a, a plant that's going to be a problem for us later on with the canal itself.
Oh, I seriously agree.
You know, I'm not, I'm, I'm just looking at down the road, because they grow out.
They do.
So you want to make sure that they're not going out to the canal.
Maybe just really educate.
Absolutely. Yeah, the education.
Just for navigation purposes.
Right, right. Thank you so much. It's a very good comment.
At least at this point, our mutt will stop it, so. That is terrible to say. It's true.
Other than that, great job.
Thank you.
Manny? I just have another question. I know originally with FPL, Solar Canopy, you know, there was talk that there might potentially ever be more add-ons, but we know that's never gonna happen.
The apartment business, I knew as far as I do now, they, they shifted to the solar farm for their solar after the go-up agreement that they had. Will we be getting in before the end?
I think they're asking for a reauthorization coming up.
Oh, they are?
With their next agreement. So if it does get reauthorized, then they're going to look at solar trees for our city hall area.
That is correct. I'll make sure I keep the news online. Speed that up. Uh, back to your comment about Deborah Austin. Uh, she is fantastic and wonderful. She has moved to Satellite. She was our, uh, junior sustain, middle school sustainability board, uh, lead teacher for, for that, uh, that, that board there. And she was just instrumental in making them, uh, productive and keeping them motivated. So big shout-out to Deb and all the work that she does. She's a powerhouse. So any other questions?
Questions from the board?
I just wanted to give a big shout-out to this one right here.
Yeah, incredible job.
For our city, which does great with our videos and education, and he's, he's been good.
Great. Nick, thank you. I'm gonna open up for public, and we'll come back.
Hey, council?
Thank you, Nick. For this time, open up for any public comment on this agenda item. Dave?
My name is Matt Fleming, and I live in the south end of the city. Have you guys taken any action on the building height increases today?
Now, this is, right here is on our Sustainability Action Plan. This agenda item is on that.
Did that include the re-resolu?
This is on our Sustainability Action Plan.
That's our, that's our.
Thank you.
So I respect his efforts on sustainability. They are the, I think, a healthy scoop of reality is key to truly improving our community and the quality of life for residents. On clean energy, the city worked behind the scenes to empower FPL against a consumer-driven conversion to clean energy for the purpose of protecting FPLs from oblique power. On protecting marine life, the city approved the dumping of dirt on our beach three times and approved an even larger project of area natural reef. The city misled our residents about the impacts of these projects to sea turtles by citing numbers ten miles south of here in the city newsletter. Meanwhile, FWC showed fifty percent non-seasonal decline each year these projects commenced. The city blatantly lied about the presence of pollution in the merchant material. On health and safety, despite a higher-than-normal occurrence of rare cancers and a discovery in an old military dump, which had been previously denied, the city fought the efforts to test soil in the large development in the old South housing. Despite concerns raised at several workshops, they allowed the installation of several crosswalks that did not have the accompanying light signals, which resulted in several vehicle collisions. The city allowed the printing of a threatening and extorting packet, which was then mailed to a resident who was concerned about water quality. That resident continues to live in fear of his and his children's safety. The city refused to hold the county accountable and renewed few rules for dumping sewage in our house. On development, the city blatantly broke the rules in the city charter by allowing two buildings that exceeded height limits by almost double what was set by residents. The city lost sixty-six percent. A million dollars on sale of just one property that they purchased in two thousand and six. Given local real estate trends, that's unheard of.
Matt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to right now, but I'm gonna take you off the podium.
While they continue to allow rear-sponsored development along the Arroyo Block, no other city has permitted several buildings so close to the edge of the beach. The city has been working to raise heights by claiming the sea level is going to rise five feet by year twenty-seven. City manager stated on video immediately she does not believe residents should have the right to vote on this item. Everything I've said here is fact. Despite many people's efforts to address the residents' issues and create accountability, the mayor, the city manager, and others in the direction continuously leave, confuse, and blatantly lie. This is the detriment of our residents, our environment, and our quality of life here on Bear Island. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion, Matt.
And I'd like to just say, you know, Matt, you leave now because you don't want to hear the truth. And that's why you walk out. Because the two buildings that you talked about were permitted before the referendum was even.
Please, man, Mark, you're up.
So I'm, I'm just, I'm just tired of listening to you lying to our residents. I'm tired of people lying to our residents.
Thank you.
We've heard enough. Bye.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Um, with regard to FPL, I would brought it first, and I just wanted, um, to be clear. Probably about three years ago, FPL went to the Public Service Commission and was asking for a rate increase at that time. And at that meeting, there were several local government officials there supporting FPL in that rate increase. And I was the only one that went up against that rate increase and asked them to put solar in the plan. And the Public Service Commission came back and required them to put solar in their plan, which is why they're building what they're building today. And I wasn't obviously the only one that asked that. There was many of them. But I was the only local official here in Riverbar County that asked for that. And that was because of where I work, was at Satellite Beach, which is what you all want. So that, what he just said was a lie. That's number one. And number two, the city, our city, was the only city that sat down with Riverbar County and demanded that they do something about the laterals here, which is why they moved all of their money over to the beachside and started doing all of sliplining here, and created the grant program through the Currell Funds. And we don't do that by screaming and yelling publicly. We do that by meeting with people and sitting down and problem-solving. That's how we get things done. We don't do things like scream and yell at people on Facebook. We don't see that as a, as a viable way to solve problems. So a lot of what Mr. Fleming said was not true. He says it all the time, even though we tell him these things. Um, so I just want the community to understand that. If you have any particular concern about what he said, it will be glad to respond with the actual facts, because everything he just said, everything, there was not one shred of truth to any of his.
Mark?
I just want us to not lose track of the great work that you've done and the presentation that you get. That was excellent, and what we heard had nothing to do with you. So on behalf of council, I think that, I just want you.
You can cut to the rub.
Yeah, I just want you to know that, you know, okay, so.
Thank you.
Don't let it take away from your humble.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was a wonderful job.
Can I say one thing? Um, it gets my, because the person that I met when I told him about the, the beach, and we had a conversation about what sand is. And as a soil-water scientist who graduated from the University of Florida, I would like to state that there is a soil-textural triangle that anybody can look up on Google or anywhere. They don't need a degree to do this. It will help them identify what sand is. You can look at the numbers from the county. I'm just gonna say that. There was no dirt put on the beach, the Satellite Beach. It was sand. The particle size may have not been that to which was required, and that was adjusted. It was sand. Through the soil-textural triangle radius, I will state my education lines. Thank you.
I had public, um, comment open on this agenda item, so it's still open. Is there any other public comment on presentation? Please.
I just want to go real, real.
State your name, just so we have to recognize.
I'm sorry. I'm Lady of Niners, Olivia Smith Court, behind the RAC Center in Satellite. I just want to let you guys know that I see a lot of crowd of residents that don't say anything on Facebook and maybe don't say anything to you. So on behalf of a lot of them, I want to give a thank you for all your work. And I've had the pleasure to work with Nick on the community garden. He's been a great guide to my kids as well as to my family. So we do impact, impacts life positively. Some people will not be able to see that, but I see a lot of that are on Satellite. So thank you for continuing to work through this, even with instances like the previous one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claudia.
Mic still open?
Good evening. Phil Compton, and, and I'm not a resident. I live in Tampa. But I work with communities all over the state of Florida as the lead for the Ready for One Hundred campaign. And I just want to say how impressed I was with everything that Nick is doing here. A lot of towns bigger than yours with more resources are doing a lot less. So congratulations. Keep it up, and we look forward to working with you to implement this in a lot more.
Thank you. Mic still open? Thank you for the comments. We appreciate it. Bring it back to the public comment. Nick, uh, your staff, incredible job. I, I can tell you.
Not just me. It's a team job.
I understand that.
Team job.
Working with the NDP and some of the different organizations, your name keeps coming up. Courtney's on, you know, the projects and the stuff you do. So it's definitely in people's eyes, and I know this council very much appreciates it. Courtney, thank you for your leadership on it.
Home works are being shouted.
And big app.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I tell you, I feel sorry for you guys. I look at that heat out there every day, and they're out there manicuring, keeping the city, you know, green, healthy, and, uh, great job.
There was, there was very rarely a project that we've been doing that they don't touch. I have to say, I mean, there's very little project anyone has in the city that they don't touch, so.
And the thing is, we keep adding to them, and they just do it.
Well, our secret is, we don't let anybody go. Look at Lulu. She's still out there. She's always.
You're still about.
You chase the little girl.
Still about Burt. I mean, that's amazing, but, so, but thank you. And that, that me?
I, I just want to apologize, Mayor, for my outburst.
That's fine.
I apologize to the residents. I was just tired of the comments. He gets up the podium, and he walks out the door, and he never listens to the truth. And I just apologize for my outburst, but I wasn't gonna listen to that anymore.
Good.
I think, Dominic, I think we, we all feel that way, but at the end of the day, here's, here's the endgame. He lives here, so we have to honor him that right to be able to say what he thinks. I pretty much disagree with everything that he says almost all of the time. The best method to move forward with this is for residents that are listening to this. If you have, as Courtney said, I just want to reinforce what she's saying. Facebook is not the place to go to get your information about your city. Um, you have council members. Our information is published on our website. Uh, my phone is open. Anyone can give me a call, and I will be happy to answer any questions. I will meet anyone for coffee, even if you're a non-resident and you live close by and you have questions. Get your information first from the source. Make your decision if you disagree with what we're doing. That is your right to do that. But it's how you handle that, going on Facebook and, and spreading hate. And, I mean, we live in this world right now, and I'm, I'm quite frankly, sick and tired of it. And I want people to present solutions to me. If you have a question, I'll answer it. If you have a problem, present a solution or listen to my solutions and provide a, a respective critique. Um, this blatant lying, there's no accountability for it, and there was several. You can believe them to be true, I'm sure, but they were definitely absolutely incorrect. And, um, it, it saddens me that, um, this is, yeah. Anyways, just get the right information, please.
And just to, everyone on this dais, except for this guy. But everyone, everyone else lives and works and owns property in the city. Every single one of them. And so that we have absolutely no motivation whatsoever to contaminate or anything like that. It, it just, um, so I just want to make that clear to people.
Mark?
The only thing I want to add is, is I know for a fact that you and Courtney, um, in particular, have reached out to these people to try to correct the inaccuracies that are there. And you've obviously, I've, you offered to meet in private, whatever the case may be. So I just think that needs to be well-known, that this is not an isolated thing. It just pops up. There's been tremendous effort on your part, Courtney, and on Frank that I know of, to try to make some sense out of this, and it just, and Mindy, and it just, yeah, sorry, Mindy. And it just hits. Mindy, and it just hits a wall, and it just doesn't go anywhere. But thank you guys for trying anyhow.
No problem. I just, I mean, I think really all we've, we're always gonna take the high road and put the facts out there. Here it is. People make their decision.
Yeah.
And it's one thing, I keep saying it, but Courtney and I, we have a discussion. We always said, it's always the truth. You put the information out there, and people are gonna take it the way they're, they take it. And there's not much we can do on that. I can't tell you how many times I've had the conversation with Mr. Fleming, to a point now that I won't meet with him alone. I usually have a staff member to record it because the information has a tendency to get twisted around, and when you do that, it doesn't come out to be fact. So I just said everybody will take the high road and, you know, looking at what Nick is doing in the city, Courtney and everybody working hard, everybody's really on the page to make this a better city. And it's always been that way. You look at the staff that works for this city, the public works, everybody, take them above everybody because they do work that hard and they are that good. So thank you. Courtney, on this item, we just accept his...
Yep.
Nick, great bud. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 10. Sorry to take long here for you. Discuss, take action on the proposed interlocal agreement with the school board of Revard County.
Well, I'm gonna try to do this agenda item as much enthusiasm as Nick did, because we're gonna be talking about an interlocal agreement with the school. So here we go. Get excited. Here's the powerpoint. So, recommended action.
That looks like it.
So we did a little few briefings on this, and we've been working hard with the school principal, vice principal, with their facilities department, their planning department, to try to look at ways of partnering with them to gain some stormwater opportunity for the city. Because as you know, we're pretty built out for them. Anything property is pretty expensive, and they've got quite a bit of land that they could offer us for stormwater. So part of this agreement we're working for today is what we're asking for is to enter into the interlocal agreement to create 15-foot easement from Jackson to the north, which would enable us to do stormwater treatment along Jackson. And as part of that agreement, we're asking this agreement to ask for to move basketball court and repave it, and once the basketball court is moved and paved, we would take the maintenance responsibilities along Jackson, with the understanding later on down the road, we'd apply for a complete street grant, which will then enable us with that 15 feet to widen sidewalks, do additional drainage, do some streetscaping. In other words, it'll just make it so much safer for the kids. It'll be a lot more attractive. We're gonna do a bike lane. So with the 15 feet, that gives us the opportunity. And one of the criteria with the TPO, complete street projects, is right away it's so expensive as part of the project. It becomes the majority cost of the project. So if you approve this today, not only will it give us the opportunity to do off-site drainage for the Jackson site, for the fire station and the Home Works Department, so that we can fully develop that site and not have to have water ponds all over the existing site, but it will also give us points in our TPO grant for the fact that we now have the easements, the 15 feet, and assigned to accomplish anything. So we are going to be meeting with the school board, facilities director, and planning director on Friday. Your attorneys are looking over this interlocal agreement. Your attorneys reviewed it, and so for the requested action is to allow the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with the school board, to allow the city to acquire easement, relocate the basketball court currently located along Jackson for off-site stormwater drainage treatment and retention for the future public works fire station, locate the located east of Delora Court, and to allow public access to those basketball courts, which currently we don't have. And so, and I will tell you, Jeremy, who is your principal of Delora, is excited to be able to share this course with the neighborhoods across the street because he knows there's kids that would like to... We had that opportunity.
I didn't think I was gonna share, and that was right over my head in our discussion that we were gonna...
Yeah, so this is similar to what you did with the track. You participated with the, with the cost of including that, which gave your community access to the track. So there aren't basketball courts on the side of, you know, the city, and so, and then there are some thoughts about maybe full-length courts, half-cores. So that's all, that often we discussed with...
But this sets the stage for easement, which is what we really need.
Yeah, so this is the beginning. And then there's a lot of things that are gonna spark from this, and you already gave Alan the heads up. I have some...
I'm sorry. I have been very actively involved with Liz on this, giving her a hard time. But one thing I think this is really great to show is how good Liz, thank you for working with the schools. I talked to Bobby today, and, you know, we got a great worker relation with the schools, and I think that's, to me, critical. The basketball thing there, being able to joint use it, and some field stuff that I know Alan's gonna kill me, but we're working with the school, who's really all the kids in our community. And it's, we, to be honest, we've had in years past a little bit of trouble doing that, and now, I mean, the welcome they give us when they see something like this, not only the school board, but principals, we're not getting turned away. And it's a different change than we've had for a long time, and thank you for doing it. Sorry, I was definitely a pain in the butt to you, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, don't look at that, that it worked. And I can tell you have two pretty happy principals. I know you're gonna have a very happy principal tomorrow when you show them what's gonna happen. And so Alan, I'm sorry to give me another field to mow, but...
Another field?
We haven't brought that...
Haven't brought up that. No, no, another little spot there that the footballers need for flag football and stuff, so anyway.
Alan knows, he gets a new facility, he gets a new person.
Yeah, so, but anyway, thank you, Liz. I think it's great, this is something that...
Yeah, a lot of them are being parsed because you've got WMJ looking at the drainage calculations, and then once we get through that drainage, and if we get the complete street, then we repave it on, and your stormwater master plan, that's gonna help with pineapple drainage, you know, all the flooding that goes on on the...
That's a major street in our town. I mean, if you think about it, that is probably the heaviest-traveled street in our town when you put all the...
Well, when you have a football game, it's...
Well, we look at the schools every morning, it is, and I think this, from the safety standpoint of doing this...
Well, the complete street is gonna be amazing.
It's gonna be great for it. So a good start here.
Getting that sidewalk off of Jackson and Mac and Eightwood, I mean, that line is... I'm on the TAC committee on behalf of the city, and we're working on a vision zero because of the amount of deaths of bicycles and vehicles and pedestrians. And so this vision zero, I'm actually on that committee as well, I just signed myself up. And these are the kind of projects that the TPO is now looking at, safety projects, because it's that important to get this taken care of. We have to start somewhere, and so they like projects like this. So we...
Okay, two comments, two questions. Yeah, the vision zero, for sure, 100% with you on that one, for sure. I can't, can't wait to get to that point if we can ever get there, you know, in units it's not... Anyways, so I'm on TPO, so I'm, you know, with you on that one, for sure. Is there any way, and I think for the future, just for residents to kind of ballpark what we're saving dollar-wise on those easements, and also the money that we're saving by the use, being able to use our land more? I mean, I think those two are huge things that we really, I think, need to put out.
Quarterbar.
Yeah, maybe quarterbarillars.
Yeah, we can quarterbar.
Yeah. And trees on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, landscaping.
Shape.
Personally, they'll be native landscaping because of some gap, I think I just saw where it's supposed to be. Native landscape ballpark or swam.
Alan wants us to paint, plant a few trees as close to the sidewalk. Right, right, so now, no, shade, really could be a good shade for this. We talked about this, I mean, I just want to say, my daughter goes to West Shore, but she takes the bus at the Schecter Center, and she rides her bike because she can drive her bike. We live in the safest city in the entire state, so I feel very confident that she can ride her bike a mile to her bus stop, and it's very hot. So, you know, having shade, I know, I'm sorry, but it's a great thing. That's my major request, and I have to back. Everything was awesome. Liz, you did a great job. Your presentation was amazing. Thank you for all the artwork, and it's gonna be awesome.
Well, these guys, we've been working with Alan and Lexi, our project manager, who's been amazing too, and the man.
Thank you.
So it's, it's exciting. I, these kind of projects, when you can bring in different entities and different pots of money and partnerships, you know, it makes a little project, and then when you can see the vision of the long, the longer term, it just, that's, I love them.
Let me, any further comments from council before I open up? Okay, at this time, open up this agenda item for a public comment. Agenda item 10.
Oh, and just as an add-on, we are looking at August 27 for the Ad-Half Committee to start working on the, yeah, home works... Home Works, the fire station, the outside of the building, the landscaping, so that's getting home works.
Mayor?
David Schecter, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. One, two things, cooperation with the school board. General, remember back in the early 80s, we first started working these issues, there was no sidewalk on Jackson, either side. The kids walked up the street. The safety group was moved over one street to leave, with Austin walking the street. And we've been working for a long time, so you'll get, remove that fence back, sort of put a sidewalk, you know, on Jackson. And we found out a number of things, we didn't have easement at the corner, but Delora Street is there. We learned a lot of things from that, but it's great, it's a cooperation. What we got is we don't do sidewalks. I'm sorry to talk to you.
Oh, they don't?
The same problem, we tried to get a fire hydrant down, or a special tunnel. We had to put a fire truck halfway down that road to get enough power down there to put water on that building. We are a problem. We went to the school board, and we don't have fire hydrants. So I'm glad you're getting the cooperation, you need to get that stuff done. These things, we've been working for a long time, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor. Further public comment? Here are none, back to council. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager's assignment of a local agreement with the school board of the fire county to allow the city to acquire a easement to relocate the basketball court currently located along Jackson Ave for off-order stormwater drainage treatment and retention for public works. Future fire station site located east of Delora Court and all public access to the courts.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion from council? Here are none?
Councilman Ruzicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Nothing, Liz, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Can't wait to work on this.
Sorry.
No, yeah, great, really, really.
We've had some good discussions. Moving on to Agenda Item 11. Discussion, discuss, take action on ordinance 1172, which is a second reading agenda.
Ordinance number 1172, an ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Delora County, Florida, permitting the city board's handbook created by ordinance 1101 to create and include the youth council, establishing duties, composition, terms of office, support staff designation, and date of meeting for youth council, providing severability and providing an effective date to second reading, ordinance number 1172.
Thank you.
Second.
Second reading. Got it. Second reading, discussion from council before I open up. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11.
We win again.
Pardon me?
We win again.
Yes, we did. This is really good. The youth council, and great job. Thank you. I mean, this is...
I hope we have a lot of interest in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think we will, just knowing, you know, the citizens in our town and the teachers, as yourself and stuff, I, it will never fail. Great.
Cassie and I are going to go to the youth council conference a week from Saturday, so hopefully we'll learn a lot of good information.
We've got a press release ready to go out, if you will approve this.
Ordinance, yes.
Yeah, well, once we, once we do this, how are we going to, how are we looking to get this out to the community? Because there's just, there's just a bunch of really smart, young adults that have already kind of been involved in our city with the, you know, the Delora Sustainability. There's people like Ethan Shoda, who, you know, who have already shown, you know, community involvement. How are we gonna go? Is there a plan?
Yeah, in the press release, it shows social media, there's an application process. We're putting on our website. It's, and the press release will be on the front page of your website tomorrow. We'll reach out to Bobby at Satellite High School, let him know that if he wants applications in the counselor center, they can fill it out in the drop-off at City Hall. So, and if you have any other ideas for us?
I know Mr. Pruitt, he does a weekly email, and I'm sure he will include that in his email.
He has an email, so anyways, we can get it out there. It's a Southern Edgewood, so, and you all authorized up to 13, so we'll see what the interest is at that point.
Perfect. At this time, let me open up for a second reading, open up for public comment, and then come back to council. Open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11. Here are none, back to council. Any further, council?
I make the motion to adopt ordinance number 1172, creating the youth council for the city of Satellite Beach.
Thank you. I got a motion by Councilman Ruzicki.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Ruzicki?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much, everyone. Jody, thank you.
Good job, Jody.
Great job. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, appointments to boards. Someone will take the lead there, Don.
I'll make a motion to reappoint as a primary member, David Vosford, to a term ending 8/7/22, and primary member Larry Whitney to a term ending 8/22 to the board's adjustment.
Do you want to add all the rest of...
The library board primary member, Arlo Massey, to a term ending 8/7/22, and the reappointment, or appointment of sustainability board, one alternate member, Steve Gillen, and promoted to a primary member to an unexpired campus goes to 6/17/21.
Okay, we want to take the ones from tonight.
Yeah, keep going, Don. I would say that we want to appoint Jennifer White to the Sampson's Island working board as a primary number, and Claudia Lanas to the beautification board as a primary number.
And Taylor.
Okay, I'll second that.
No, Tayler.
Tayler, oh, yeah.
Did we interview them?
You might have stepped out. We reopened?
We reopened, that was...
You were in here.
So we're gonna appoint Taylor to which board?
Also beautification.
Beautification.
On in my second. Thank you. The motion was by Dominic Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Right? Okay.
Okay.[1699.04]